I'd like to call a regular meeting of I S D 701 School District, Wednesday, September 10th, 3:30 PM, daylight saving time. I'd like to welcome everybody here. With that, I'll go to item two. My devotee, please stand to wish.
My devotee, just to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of your God, in the middle with liberty, peace and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, would you like to free turn over superintendents?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Public comment today, we have Ms. Ashton Martin, and she is here asking for an update on the number of paraprofessional positions in the district and the demand for their services within the population. So, Ms. Martin.
Hi. I wish I would have written down what I wanted to say, but I just wanted to talk to you today because I've been inquiring about enrolling students in the district, students who have special needs. And when speaking with the Special Education Department for this district, the initial response I had received was that the district at this time isn't able to accommodate one-to-ones. And I asked, how is that possible if a student were to demand or a student required a one-to-one? You can't really turn that away. They said that it was due to staffing and that there was other things that they would have to do in order to kind of balance out that student's needs, whether it be like adding additional special ed classroom time or, you know, we need more on Monday to talk about how that might look. But I think my question to you all today is really honestly, how many pair of positions were cut? And is that affecting students' access to education, to quality education? Because as a parent looking to enroll a student who has specific safety concerns, being told that we can't accommodate what they might need is a little bit nerve-wracking, especially when I live in this community. So I think my question to you all is, how many pair of positions were cut? And how many students do we have needing pairs? And how many remain within the district? And how is that being balanced? And is it starting to affect access?
And I can help with that, Ms. Martin. I don't have the numbers, all the big numbers right up the top. But what I would suggest, if you're meeting on Monday with Mr. Lutz and that team, in that conversation, in that team decision conversation, that's what we're asking for, is just some consideration to look as a team, what the best needs for your child and all of the children. We do have folks that will move into the district and have those services in their IEP. We just want to have a meeting discussing. We may be able to provide some services that other districts have in a different way, meet those obligations in a regular classroom with a classroom teacher. We do have one-to-one aides in our district. And we do have students that receive that service. But I think that just if you have that team meeting, right, and work through that, that's all we're asking, is just a conversation.
Okay, and where would I find information on how many pair of positions are in the district?
I can get you all. So a number of pairs you were asking for, okay?
And their workload, their workload. So how many students do we have in the district that require pairs or positions?
Okay, I can find that information for you. And did you leave a phone number on here?
I did.
Okay. I will reach out to you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
So, Mr. Eldridge, I guess this is for you and you. Because so I recently had a conversation with you about pairs to just to find out where are we at? Because we kind of, we knew the possibility of when making cuts that this was something where legally we would more than likely have to bring on some of the staff members in special ed that we let go or those positions.
Yep.
Um, with, and I don't know if you know this together or not, but with enrollment numbers, do we know how many or if we do have to bring any pairs back on due to the IEPs? And not, you know, we were saying that, you know, we would like to try to do more of like the group pairs in classrooms.
Cheer, cheer, yeah.
Yes. Um, but even with that, are we still in the position where we have to bring pairs back on? Because like throughout the year, I feel like that is always something that comes and goes on our agenda and our hiring. So do we know where we're at right now as far as that?
We do. I think today, I mean, with Ms. Martin and other enrollees, I think that's a conversation going forward. But today, we're able to cover with what we have. And we've been able to meet those requirements in-house. We do have a handful of folks that are sitting on the list, right, that are U L A that are waiting to come back. But again, I think as this conversation is only becoming to the point, like I shared with you, with the potential of some of these ads, then we just have to have a conversation about, how are we paying for them? That might mean that we have to reduce in another area because yes, these are requirements that we have to meet. So obviously, we will. But as of today, we're, things are still kind of shuffling and still working out a little bit. Some kids that we thought were coming haven't come. Some kids that we didn't know were coming have showed up. There's still a little bit of like turnaround. That should all be settled here within the next week. We know exactly who's in and out. And yes, today, we can meet that requirement, but I think we would have to look at some additions going forward just based on our needs, so absolutely.
Is this part of the state mandate that was presented years ago, year ago? And how would we get funding for it?
The only piece to this that's really not funded would be that cost subsidy piece again that we've talked about. It's just, you know, that we backfill that cost. But no, this isn't related to any other mandate other than that, the cost subsidy piece that we're just underfunded. So again, Ms. Martin, I'll reach out to you tomorrow with answers to other questions.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
With that, who type of quarters, administrative reports, and then meeting directors?
I didn't know who out of our admin were going to be here today, but Mr. Berg is not. So I just wanted to share that the first week of school I attended, the Washington for drop-off and pickup, just to help with staff. I remember you saying that you had gone last year and that they seemed to really appreciate that, both staff and family members and whatnot. So I thought, well, I'll step in and do that. And I just wanted to share that, one, it was just very, very fun. I mean, those kids were so excited. I mean, some were just like running in to see their teachers that they hadn't seen or seen their friends. And it was interesting because from day one of doing the bus and then day two, they, and they, I mean, our staff at Washington, you know, recognized things that they wanted to change or tweak to maybe make the flow better. And, you know, I'm not aware of any of that. But I immediately noticed on day two, just how different it felt as far as, oh, we don't have as many kids now today in the hallway. So the buses don't seem to be backed up today. And I just want to give kudos to them for, you know, recognizing things immediately, being able to make that change. And the outcome of it was very positive. And I was an outsider coming in, didn't even know anything about it until I asked a question and they just said, oh, we did this today. And it really made a difference. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that the kindergarten teachers, they had mentioned to me that this year, day one and day two, they did half of the kindergarten on one day, the other half the second day. And they really, really appreciated that. They said that really gave them more time to get to know those students, get through all of the, this is how the classroom works. And for those newbies coming in, you know, this is where things are. It just made everything a lot easier. So they hope that they are allowed to continue to do that going forward because it made a difference for them. And they seem to be very happy with that. So I just wanted to share that.
We were today, we met as an administrative group today, and we just, and we talked about what went well with the start, what we could improve on. And B J. shared all that. He said it was probably his best start ever. He said this kindergarten example, he's, I think, I don't want to say the times because I'll get them wrong, but I know their release time had changed a little bit. The E L C. kids are going to leave a little bit earlier and now they're going to, and he said that just worked really smooth. He said, first day, he had parents that were, you know, a lot of parents that could come early, like really early, like sometimes 40 to 45 minutes early to pick up their kids and they'll wait in line. And so B J. just said, hey, and he had to walk that first day and talk to the two parents and say, please arrive. And he said, the next day, I didn't have any issues. He said it was the best start he's ever had. So, and that was echoed really by all of our other buildings. We had some changes in transportation this year. That was a concern, how that was going to roll out. I think things went very, very well. We had a good start. I mean, there's obviously hiccups. We had some late, some late buses on those first days when some kids were on for extended amount of times. But that kind of works itself out because that first drop-off and pickup, there's lots of conversations that happen and it just starts, you know, kind of start piling up, another minute here, another minute there, and then pretty soon you're a half hour behind. But that was more just like the first day. And yeah, it was just a really good start, super positive. And staff, staff are excited, positive. I think there's just changes in some of our administration. I mean, that brings a different air to the building, different excitement. I think here, it's just a change, it's something new. I think at Lincoln, it's a change, it's something new. And we've got challenges, we obviously have challenges, but they're all in all, very good start, one of the best.
Did Dustin call that changes going?
He, I think Dustin, I think they're very busy. Dustin, very, very busy. But they did such an excellent job. Just giving an example, my own boy waited to the very last minute, I think Friday afternoon, before the start of school, to send an email about busing. He got a call on Saturday at seven in the evening from somebody from Dustin's, you know, taking that extra step on a weekend, calling parents to make sure that bus routes are on. So I think it's, I haven't spoken to Dustin. Tyler has quite a bit, and I think Dustin's happy with the situation. Things are going well. And again, he was able to reduce a couple of bus routes in this hole, which will help our bottom line. I'm proud of, proud of where we're at. It was a very good start this year.
I had a question. Got a couple of calls. Just want to make sure, maybe Carrie, somebody can answer this. Do we get our iPad situations where we, we had students that came here and didn't have an iPad?
I guess I'm not exactly sure what status is of who still doesn't have their iPad, but I know that there are still students that are needing to get them. But I don't think there's a huge number of those.
I think we've had, I think we had a few at the Lincoln that were struggling with some iPads, but we're good to go in the high school.
Apparently, just when they started, they didn't have it at the beginning of the first day or the second day.
That could be, I guess it depends on the grade level. If it's, you know, junior, senior, maybe that's a little bit more of an issue. But our younger kids, they do a lot more team building and getting to know each other than iPad or that first.
I think student of his parents is an eighth grader.
Okay, okay, okay.
And then I just wanted to comment, I was going to bring in one, I forgot it. A little, let's call it a booklet, marketing.
The mailer that we sent up?
Mailer, yeah, of our staff and schools. I thought it turned out very, very nice.
Very professional, yes.
And I think it is good to, you know, have something in hand for families in case they, you know, need to get ahold of somebody or that phone number or anything. So I just, I thought it was put together very nicely.
Thank you. And that's, a lot of that credit goes to Carrie Fox. She did 99% of the work, I think. We, you know, we helped with some of the dialogue and sent some pictures, but other than that, she did the legwork. And that, the idea there again was, you know, we typically do put that information out in an insert that will go to Natties with all our bus routes and that information. So our bus routes, and we went to Q R code, right? We went there instead of printing out four pages of bus routes. The other piece of it was that with all the changes that we had in the district and changes in faces in administration, like we've wanted parents to see, what does my principal look like? What is the new principal? I didn't, I didn't want to be on the front cover and I sure didn't want my picture taken, but somehow that's how I ended up. And somebody said, is that, what picture is that? He didn't look like that. That from 20 years ago. But that was actually from this summer. Maybe somebody touched it up. I don't know what they did, but it was an actual swipe picture just from a couple of months ago. But yeah, that was something that we saw Rockbridge have done when they, you know, first, it was just a classy look. And again, I think it's something you hang on your fridge. You got those numbers, you got the information. It's good luck.
And to add on that, I think it was nice to showcase all the good things that were going on in our school and all the opportunities despite making some difficult cuts. I think we're still head and shoulders, provide the best education and educational opportunities for kids.
Yeah, I got to sub at the Lincoln. And the playground, not only did I see the playground equipment, of course, but I got to see all the students really enjoying the playground equipment. Oh, there was so much activity. It was really fun to watch. And then I crossed paths with Mr. Berg and Alexis to, this band student. And they were over there trying to recruit people for band. And he showed me the list, there were like over 20 names on there.
Awesome, awesome.
That was fun.
I can see how happy, I can just see your face so happy.
The day before, mom got a heater on in my car and the little kids are out there playing, it's cold and laughing all the time from just kids all over. I said, yeah, really nice to see them. Let's hope that the pamphlet helps when it comes to our revenue.
Well, and that had that information, so I mean, every resident that has a mailing address in our district received that. So again, that checks off, you know, one of those boxes on our list that we have to get that information out to the many peoples we can. Yeah, so again, thanks to Mrs. Fox. It was really her hard work that put it together.
Very good, thank you. With that, who do you have? Administrators, supervisors, directors?
I apologize, Mr. Chair.
Where are we?
Where are we in the agenda? We are at the administrative.
This is a test.
We got a letter, I think you're still asking for directors.
Student director.
Oh. Can I add one since I'm really throwing you off?
Sure you can.
And I do want to say that I missed the last meeting. And I understand it was the shortest meeting we ever had. So I apologize for being long-winded every time we meet. But we do have a student director. He wasn't able to be here today. His name is Sam Hardy. I met with him earlier, right after the start of school. He's super excited to be here. He was really bummed that he couldn't come tonight. But he, I think it's a crescendo orchestra. They're traveling and performing. I can't remember where he said, tonight. But Sam's going to be a good student director, student rep to have on the board. So he'll be at the next meeting.
Good, good news.
So will I. I'd just like to say welcome to a wonderful new school year. And the sports are off to a great start.
Yes.
So fun.
Any committee reports? Your unanimous vote, I have a motion to approve the agenda.
I approve.
Why, after Poulter, support great director at your seat? Any discussion? Your unanimous favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion, Carrie.
Thank you.
Chair, welcome. Nathan and I were planning to present today. I know Mr. Poulter was waiting for my lengthy presentation.
That is just another thing that you're forgetting.
This is my fault again. This is my fault. I should have, I should have said administrators and what it be and who they were. So we have Carrie McDonald, our Director of Teaching and Learning that's here to give us an update. She also has some test score updates that she's going to share with you too from M C H.
I'll try to be quick. Thank you.
Two testings.
Yes.
I just want to start by giving an update on the career academy, just to kind of remind everybody of the new courses that we're offering this year. We have Intro to Nursing, Whole Home Health Day, that's going to be second semester. And we have E M R. and Basic Life Support. We have 17 kids taking that class this fall. It's a brand-new class. They have the opportunity to take it for four S I Ts credits. And the kids are super excited. It's a two-hour block, fourth and fifth hour. We've got a college instructor coming onsite to provide this because we don't have a licensed staff. And so it's a nice opportunity that we're looking at. We're working together with the college and our teachers here to provide something for kids. The new personal finance course. And then another project that Ms. Fox has been working on is our new entrepreneurship program. So we're working with the Chamber to basically offer a entrepreneurship course, but it's being run more as like a club, so students won't get credit for it. But we have different Chamber members coming in and covering different content out of an entrepreneurship textbook. So we're really excited. That kicks off, I think, next week. Another awesome opportunity is A J. Body and I have been selected to participate in a Minnesota Association for Career and Tech Ed Fellowship Program. And we're very excited about this. So the goal is to build long-term capacity of C T E. leaders across Minnesota. So we have an understanding of C T E. policy and how to navigate the structures of state and federal government. We want to have highly knowledgeable C T E. champions. So hopefully, this fellowship will allow us to be C T E. champions across the state and for the future. And it's a year-long program. So we have monthly meetings. We go to a national conference down at Washington, D.C. to look at federal policy. We get to go to Capitol. There's a Capitol Day for C T E. that we get to go down. So it'll be really nice for us to be able to promote support of the C T E. programming. And one of the things that I would love to see is that in our Minnesota graduation requirements, we don't have a C T E. requirement. You can graduate from high school and never take a C T E. course. And with the way that the world is now and how prevalent jobs are in those C T E. fields, I think we should be requiring kids to take a C T E. course to graduate. So that's one of the things that I'd love to fight for. Very excited about that opportunity. I just wanted to review a little bit our district priorities. And these are based off of the district leadership team. So a lot of this was covered during InServe Week. We picked up the literacy framework. And so the goal of that is basically that all grade-level teachers are teaching the same content in, you know, if I'm teaching kindergarten reading, I'm using the same resources. Kids in all classes are getting the same number of minutes in literacy, all of those kinds of things. And so we had a team that worked this summer to build this literacy framework. It was a lot of work, but the teachers did an amazing, amazing job coming together. And then, you know, to kind of build that shared leadership model, they went to their grade-level teams during InServe Week and presented this framework and worked through how to support it across the entire grade level. Really excited about that. We'll continue with math in our new math curriculum and high school standards. Continue with our fast-paced testing. The state added a new requirement called C A P D. testing. So thank you for that state, with no extra money to pay for it. We are implementing a social emotional curriculum, K. 7. That's called Everyday Speech. Very excited about that. I know that you approved the teacher eval, new model, and excited about that as well. Yesterday, all buildings had a meeting with their staff to talk about our new, what we call collaborative linked teams. And really what that is, is typically when you're trying to refer a student to specialize, you go through a process and then it comes to a referral team. And the team is deciding whether or not we're going to test this child for special education. But the state requires a whole, and the federal government requires a lot of things to happen. Because we don't want to be defining a student as having a disability if they truly do not, right? So we want to be able to provide interventions by classroom teachers that you can provide interventions to students without them having an IEP. And so trying to support teachers and students in that general ed setting. So now we're going to be having these teams. We're going to have general ed teachers be a part of this. They're going to be problem-solving on students that are struggling. What can we do to better support them? And it doesn't necessarily mean we test them for special ed. Of course, if a child has a disability, we want them to get the services that they need. But we don't want to just have them labeled as having a disability so they can get help. We can provide help at other levels versus just the special education tier three. Win time is called what I need. And so K. 7., all students will have access to a win time. And that's going to be a time during the day where students are getting review, intervention if they're below grade level, extensions and enrichment if they're above grade level. We want to challenge those kids that are ready for the next step. So this is the first time where we've actually had this built into every kid's schedule, and it's really exciting. And then we're continuing to work on the personal learning plans at the high school. Any questions on any of those things?
I don't know if this is the right place to ask this question, but I'm going to ask it here. So when you talked about, you know, the entrepreneurship, the C T E. information, I talked to three parents since school started. And one called me not very happy about their student 4.0. Doing, they're now over at, doing two classes at the college. Another parent just doing our virtual Blue Jackets. And the question that they asked that both of them ran into when they, the one doing online, the parent was kind of surprised. But in these classes now, are any, any classes that we offer going over with these students on how to use Microsoft Office, Word, Excel, PowerPoint, and it sounds ridiculous, how to save a Word document, where to save a Word document? It's the little things that, you know, we, I, 25 years ago, did learn. I learned typing here in this school. I learned how to do all those things here. But it seems like from these parents' standpoint that their students have not been taught that. So is this anything that will fall under what you're doing? Or do we have other classes that do teach that? Because that's real world.
Absolutely. I met with our media teachers, or so they would be, we have a media teacher, media slash library at all of our schools. So I met with the high school, Lincoln, Greenhaven, and Washington media staff. We actually sat down and worked out like a scope and sequence for what media is covering. Because it's changed so much, like library doesn't look like library anymore. They need, there's other things that they need to learn about, whether it's digital citizenship, dealing with social media, learning how to create a PowerPoint presentation, learning how to create a Word document, all of those things. We actually kind of mapped out what skills they're going to be working on, K. through grade eight, so that we're making sure that we're hitting those important tech skills. And we have a new course this year in eighth grade called Media. So students that, it's one of the elective options. They, they're learning exactly what you're talking about in eighth grade. How do you submit a PDF when you have to put a PDF in Schoology to turn in your assignment, all of those things?
And then, and you guys talked about iPads. I don't even know this, but do our iPads, are they the ones that have, you know, you flip over and has the keyboard or no?
Yes. So I'm not sure what levels they go down to, but definitely here.
Okay. Because again, you know, you're typing. And again, I learned that here, but I don't think we teach that anymore.
We do, now in the media.
Okay, okay, good. I like to hear that. Because again, you know, you go to college, you go in the workforce. I mean, I'm on my computer all day, I'm constantly typing. And if you are just, this takes a lot, a lot of time if you're doing that. So I'm happy to hear that. And I think that parent will be happy to hear, even though, you know, that's past his daughter's grade at this point. But I think it's important that we are teaching, like you mentioned, being prepared for real life and not just test-taking here.
Absolutely. And I think a lot of it is like, having my position as somebody that can look at the big picture and be like, okay. A lot of times in education, we're in our little silos, right? Like I teach fifth grade reading, this is what I do in my room. But I have to make sure in my position that all fifth grade teachers are teaching that, right? Because a kid should not have two completely different experiences if they have two different fifth grade teachers in reading. They all deserve the same reading experience. But then I have to look at, did sixth grade and fourth grade cover what they need? So I mean, I really tried to take a look at vertically and horizontally what we're covering in the different subjects and making sure that we're consistent.
Thank you. So I have a question. Do you see?
Do you see in the future more like manufacturing CTEs?
Yes, and we offer a ton of manufacturing classes already. But yes, I would love to see our CTE. We should go have coffee at some point because I would just talk about CTE and how I honestly think my, this is my, if I could forecast the future, I think 11th and 12th grade will be all about CTE. Because right now, we have a college that's providing the same thing we're trying to provide. And if we don't start working together, and that means the state needs to come in and say, you're going to do this, you're going to do that, instead of fighting over the same kids and trying to offer all the programming when nobody can afford it. So I would love to see where we're focusing on more CTE stuff at the high school level.
The other thing I heard, Carrie, and I just want to put this out there so in the future we can take it into consideration. I heard from a parent who has an honors student in 10th grade and wanted to get into an honors English class, is in all other honors classes. But got their schedule and was not placed in honors English. Contacted the school, the school said, well, there's already 36 or 38 students in that class, so it's full. So the student was placed in the regular English course with 12 students. And I understand that there are limitations, but we're trying to keep students in our school. So this student got frustrated and saying, next year, I'm just doing all PSEO. And I know the legislation changed over time where initially PSEO, no, SIS classes had to be all students that were taking it for college credit. And the legislation changed, I think, to accommodate smaller schools. And I just wish we could be creative to help accommodate students that really want to expand the rigor and stay in our school. And I don't know what that means. If that means, you know, within that section of 12, that maybe there's a way that that can be balanced. But just putting it out there that we, I think we need to try to keep those kids in our school.
What about independent study?
Yeah.
If the class is full, they could do an independent study. So I don't have an answer.
Yeah, I don't have an answer, but I think that we need to work with those students and families.
Okay. I'm running out of time, aren't I? Okay, I'm going to move into test scores. But before I start on this, I want you to believe that, or understand that I really am not a huge fan of test scores and of us putting all of our eggs in that basket. I'll be honest. We do so much more for our students than can be documented on an MCA test. And a lot of times when the kids have no, there's no, there's nothing that they get from taking the test per se. We don't have the intrinsic motivation anymore to just do well on that test, right? So I really caution you to hold the test scores as the most important thing to what we do in our district. We do so much more. So this is just a little few quotes I found. That being said, we did well on our test scores. First of all, I'm just going to show, I have FastBridge up here. So FastBridge is the test that we take fall, winter and spring. We take several subtests. I only put the two math tests and two of the reading tests on here. We've set our percentile, our benchmark at the 50th percentile. Most districts set it at the 40th percentile. We've raised it to the 50th because when we had our audit by the NTSSS, the U of M, they told us that if you really want to be able to compare results on FastBridge to MCA's, you should raise your bar on your FastBridge. So I could have put the 40th percentile up here and showed you how awesome we did. But we raised our bar and our teachers know that as well. So this is early math, which kindergarten first grade takes, and then A math for second through 12th grade. The next slide is early reading and A reading. And so this is kind of our data from that. Then I'm going to move into our MCA data. And I had to give kudos to Mr. Vestal. I called him, I think it was yesterday, and said, do you want me to present on the MCA stuff? You're not on the board agenda for a while. And he said, sure, I already created something. You did? That's amazing. So Mr. Vestal put this chart together. This is percent proficient. And the science scores aren't in yet. The next slide addresses that. But you can see district-wide, we're in math, we're just a little bit below the state average. And then in reading, we're above the state average. But I love data and I love looking into things and trying to figure out the why behind the numbers. And I just want you to know that when you look at this, you think, oh man, you know, we're below the state average. When I dug into this, our 11th grade, and this is at the very back of your, sorry, not in your packet on MCA data, there's a page that's labeled Math Grade 11. So I just want to show you for example, how data can be businessable. So if you look in that packet, you find Math Grade 11. You will see that on the very bottom row there, in 2025, we had 129 students take that test.
Carrie, we need to find the page.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have page numbers on here.
Do you know what word was?
She wrote this on there.
The one at 159.
Yeah, it's the only one that I wrote on the bottom, sorry.
Got it.
I should have put page numbers. So when you look at this, it's like, oh man, we're only 26% proficient in the 11th grade on the math test. But guess what? 30 of our students didn't take it. And it's probably the 30 students that are PSEO that didn't take it. So how badly does that skew your data? So I've already been in touch with Derek and Jen. We are going to do everything we can to require our PSEO kids to take this test because the district can require it. Parents do have the opportunity to say, no, I don't want my child to take that test. But we can require it. And so if we can get those 30 students to take that test, how much is our data going to increase, hopefully? So again, I really caution us when we're looking at MCA data as to how reliable it is on how well our students are doing or how successful they're going to be. The next slide just has the grade level data that Bob put together and explains why we don't have any science scores yet. Because, you know, the state put out a new list of standards, new test, and then they didn't have any benchmarks to grade the tests off of. So we don't have any scores on that yet. But in this packet, you have every grade level for reading and for math. And you can see not just this year's scores, but kind of the history behind 2021 to 2025. So you can see how we've been doing. So for those of us that really enjoy data, this is some fun stuff for you to look at. Any questions?
Yeah. So I agree with you. I think test scores, I don't care about test scores. They can be good, they can be bad. I don't care one way or the other. But you being in education for as long as you are and I am not, what do you base the success on if it's not test scores? What, what do you look at to gauge where your student body is and the success of their education that they're receiving?
I guess if I was going to use some data, it would be the FastBridge data. Because it tells me where a kid starts in the fall and where they end in the spring. And so if I wanted to talk to teachers about how they should use data, they should look at their kid's data in the fall. And that data can be broken down into, these are the skills student A is struggling with. So during that win time, that what I need time, work with those kids on those specific skills. Because not all the rest of the kids need those skills. And so it's really about individualizing what the kids need to work on. But also at the same time, they've got to do grade level content, right? They've got to teach the fifth grade's reading standards. But what about Johnny who is two grades behind and needs help with that? So I mean, I just, I guess, and I think it's, in the beginning of my career, it would have been like test scores. We got to raise these test scores, you know, everything's black and white, especially being a math major, right? But the older I get, the more, the more involved I am in other areas other than just being a high school math teacher, the more I see that, like, we're raising the whole child. You know what, one of the biggest things that I would judge on is social, soft skills. Can a student who's a senior and going to graduate have a conversation with me about their work-based learning experience? Am I getting good feedback from their employer about how they're conducting themselves? Are we supporting and teaching them to be good people, good citizens? And then know how to find the information they need? That's the other thing. I mean, everything's at their fingertips, with their phones, with their iPads. I don't need them to memorize, you know, 10,000 things because they have access to it. But I need them to know how to get that information. And I think that's why when we talk about what skills we're teaching, we did this activity, if you go in my office right now, it's full of chart paper with sticky notes all over it. We went through all of the college and career readiness skills with the high school teachers. And they all put a sticky note on each one of the charts to show what they do in their class that supports that skill. A lot of them are employability skills. So we have to start thinking of high school as not just content, like I am teaching about World War II, but more about, I'm teaching kids how to go out and be good citizens and be productive members of their community. So it's subjective.
How, how did COVID affect test scores? I mean, before this, have these?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can only blame COVID for so long.
Right. I'm just wondering if COVID went down and came up or?
I think they have come up a little bit. And if you are watching the news, like last night, Joel was asking me about how does our Minnesota compare? And that was the NAEP test. So it was the national test. And you could, they kind of compared some of those things. Again, it, I don't know. I just, I struggle to even, because the dig, the further you dig into the data, the less reliable it is. So.
Just a comment I'd like to make. We've talked about PSD. I am against it. I think that, as Carrie mentioned, kids are losing that experience to be around kids their own age and to communicate with them and be on the same level. And, you know, being that so many of our kids, a lot of them twelfthers, tape is broken, which is great for the parents, important for them to get an education. But again, you're leaving this building. And our main objective is to try to keep students in this building. So I think we need it, and whether we can or not, I know it's a legislature thing. But I think it's time that not only this school, but the surrounding area, you take a look at what's going to happen with that program. Because we don't know what's going to happen with our school in two years, every year. So I just wanted to throw that out. I know you're probably, and what you've done with the Career Academy, I think it's the right avenue for students to go into right now. Because to get into a technical skill, and Mr. Poulter can verify this with his grandsons, that's to me, what's going to be beneficial for them in the years to come. You can always go back to school, but you always, you always have a hard time finding a good job. You find a good job in education after that. And they get a good education and a diploma for HIBbing.
That's right. So. If I had to do it over again, I have a daughter who has a four-year degree, a master's degree. She just enrolled in the HIBbing law enforcement program. I've never seen her happier in her entire life. She is loving life. And I would have never thought that, that, that would have, should have been an option for her leaving high school. It sure would have been a lot cheaper.
I have to admit, I went to four years and then my degree from St. Cloud. And after a four-year degree in business and management, I'm at done with the incentive to get in my pipe fairs and plumbers. Go get a job.
Right. But, but we don't direct kids that way. We need to start.
And I would just like to add, and Carrie spins off of, it's not all about test scores. It's are we putting out students that are reliable, productive members of society? And so there are a lot of social, emotional and soft skills and soft skills that they're learning in this building. It's not all about rigor, freedom, choices. I mean, we need to put out good, productive members of society. So it's, and, and they're missing some of that when they're not in a K10 environment.
I can't let you forget Mr. Lutzka. He's next.
That's a hard act to follow. Yeah, just wanted to give everybody an update on special education programming in the district. This year, due to your support, we were able to beef up our, our support for our new teachers in the district. So this year, we hired consultants through Nova Education out of the Twin Cities. And they are helping those new teachers with all the requirements for due process. So we, their, their coin phrase is ghostwriters. So basically, they come to the meeting virtually, they take all the information down to the team, and then they write the IEP and complete the evaluation for the team. So that way, it takes the burden off of those new teachers that are learning about the field and then just being able to focus on the kids, which we feel is the most important. So the other thing that we have to just continue our initiative, meet kids where they're at, we brought back the two consultants that have worked with me and our district for several years. Jan Ostrom, who's a behavior consultant, and then Kathy Schuber was an autism consultant. And so we've expanded their supports to not only the Washington or K1 building, but to the 23 Greenhaven building in regards to accessing them for support. For example, Kathy area's Steve consultant is going to be in the district next week for two days to observe one of our new teachers at the Washington that's working with our autistic population. We give them pointers, resources, things like that. So we're really trying to beef up to support these new professionals so that they, they feel like they're heard and they're getting what they need to, to get better at their craft. So very, very excited about that. The other thing that's coming up on the board agenda is our, our partnership with Rockbridge on different things is really coming to fruition. It's really exciting to meet with their administration, their superintendent. Mr. Alkisch has been able to attend some of those meetings as well. But things are really coming together as far as kind of our vision of what we're looking at. So Rockbridge is definitely very interested in duplicating the single district model for special education. They hired their own director, who is now their second year. And so we've been kind of working on different things that we, we will work and partner with together. Couple of things that we have done is we're going to be partnering in regards to alternative education. So what this will do is, is both of us could access targeted services, meaning after school, support academic and social, emotional support for students that are in need of those services. And so that allows us to run our own programs independently, but under one umbrella. Because you need to have a partnership to qualify for those services through the MDE. So that's, that's one phase of that. The second phase is I've been working with their business office in regards to special education finance. We've had several meetings in regards to how they can improve their process and breaking away from the NLC in regards to how we can get them up to par in what a single district, how it's run, how, how to manage it properly and to stay in compliance. So I'm meeting with their business manager. We've had a couple, I don't know, two or three meetings already with the director. So we're going to be meeting next week to kind of solidify. Because they're, of course, going through and out of like we are again. So on the special ed side, we're just trying to really give them some, some tools and resources in regards to how we, how we do things, because we do it well. And then the last piece is that they have, they have broken ground on a building on their campus in regards to high, I would say, the coin phrase some of yous is focused, but some of our high-need students, they are building, are redoing a building for those, for those students that we're struggling to try to give support to. And so we'll be all giving you an update on that, how that project is going. But when that is done in the 26, or the start of the 26, 27 school year, we will be able to meet with, with their people and have HIBbing students go there to get those services, which, which is a financially sound way to do business. So very exciting about that.
Do you think any students currently, if it was in place today, would be going there that are at that high level that you're talking about?
Well, I mean, the eligibility for that is pretty complex. I mean, so I would say that when you have a student that is in a focus program or what we call a level four setting, typically you don't want that to be more than a year or so. Some students tend to fit in well with that kind of program. And with a team decision, they may stay there. But the idea is to have a short. But the idea is to have a short stint up to a year and then bring them back. So we're doing that right now in our own district. We've had kids in higher-level need services at the Washington and at the Lincoln. And now we've integrated those kids back into the high, you know, high school, wherever they ended up, because that year was up. And so, but, but I can tell you, when we were partnering with the NLC for a level four programming, we probably had about six students who were sending there. So I would say probably about the same, that would meet that threshold of that eligibility. So we also, we also know that, you know, you're moving kids to different programs, that your money's also falling that kid too. So we just want to make sure we exhausted everything. But, but basically, at a level four setting or focus program, it's, it's, the statute's pretty clear. For every eight students that have behavior challenges, you have to have a teacher in a, in a pair. So that's, that's kind of what I look at, is supporting one teacher, one eight, to support up to eight Hiving students in their, their program. So does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
So Nathan, would those students like continue to be our students when they're over there? Or that those details?
Well, we, we kind of have to work that one out. You know, they, they, it will be their facility and under their umbrella. So I would assume that what we would probably do is come to some agreement on what that would be. The nice thing is that, you know, we have a lot of people here that have been doing this work for a long time. We have a lot to share with them, and so they feel that that has value. So for example, our, one of our, my early childhood lead and low incident facilitators is now with their director over there at the press early childhood, and how they can help and get ready to being on their own versus Rockbridge. So I think there's going to be some give and take, you know, where we could get a lesser cost based on some of the things we're offering in regards to knowledge about being a single district for, for our entirety.
So. I appreciate that, because I think together we're stronger. And so be able to provide more opportunities to all students.
And this isn't a consolidation by any means. It's, it's that Rockbridge came to, came to us, we didn't come to them. They, they felt they could do it better on their own, so they wanted to know how they could do that. And so we had our conversation first about maximizing MA revenue. And they kind of followed our system, and it's been really exciting for them to be able to generate more revenue using the same kind of tools that we have. So, so that's, that was the start, and then it kind of snowballed from there. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah, thanks.
And they have a board member who will be president of the MSBA come January 1st, so.
Is that you, huh?
No, Tim Burden.
Oh, Tim, okay.
So he's a nice representative.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's, I mean, I think he's been up to speed on what we've been doing, and he's been excited about it too. So, yeah, thank you.
Just to say too, thank you, Nathan. But just want to share with the board too, that Nathan has really, above and beyond in some of the work that he's done lately with this, this partnership with Rockbridge, but also just within our own district. And it really just turning over every rock, trying to find everything we can do to, down to the penny. And he, he presents so well and does such a great job when he's out in the boat. Now, I'm fearful that Rockers is trying to steal him. So if you get the opportunity, please tell him, oh, probably ought to happen here. And, and he, he just does a fantastic job. And he, I'm sure he looks very appealing when you're sitting in those meetings with the superintendents. You know, I'd like to get this guy on my team. So we want to keep you, Nathan, is what I'm trying to say. But he's just done a fantastic job. And, and this partnership with Rockbridge is, it's unique in a lot of ways. You know, what we're doing with Clokey right now, it's more of an on-paper agreement. They're letting us access their ALC to get to targeted services, as Nathan described. It's a whole different look. We, we could potentially service seventh and eighth grade students in an alternative setting, which we can't do now because we don't have that permission from the state to do. So we have a 912 alternative program. So it opens up some other options for us, for, you know, kids that might be struggling and need some extra support. It'll just, it's going to, I think, be another opportunity for us to shine a little bit. And with a partner. And even though they're 30 miles away, I think we can find lots of ways to make that work. So very, very, just again, thankful of your, all the work you do, Nathan. All of our administrative team, but give Nathan some big kudos too, so thank you.
Good discussion. Thank you. Well, that was item 6, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Support by Director Poulter, support by Director Egan, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, sign. Motion, Carrie, thank you. That was item 7. Administrative business, turn that over to Sir Alex.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You're welcome. Item A is a motion to approve payment number four to Max Grade Construction in the amount of $655,815.94 for work completed on the Greenhaven renovation project.
So support.
Board Director McGlaughlin, support Board Director Marty, any discussion?
Absolutely.
Ladies first.
I would just like to, like $293,026.92. I would like to just commend Tyler, his team, Max Grade. When I look at this, I really love the column about the change orders. It's a negative number. So like if I'm reading this right, we've saved some money, a lot of money in plumbing and some demolition savings, and we've been able to kind of repurpose that in flooring and some casework. But overall, it's a negative change order. So kudos.
Tyler's not here today, but again, he, you know, he's, he's taken your charge. Your, this goes back a few years, but when we started our construction projects and the board adamant that there's no change orders. He went negative. He actually saved us some money this time. And again, we can have things that come up and change, and there's things that happen. But that, that's, we drive that point, correct? I mean, it's, it's not driven by the contractor, it's we make that choice. And again, I know Mr. Director Egan's going to ask, and I, I got the answer if you don't, Alex. But I think we're looking at two more payments. We're looking at one more to clean.
That's the one that was?
Oh, I thought for sure you weren't knowing how many payments we had. I think we're going to have two more, we're going to clean this up, and then we'd have that retained piece and just those final check-offs at the end.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
My other comment was, we should make it very clear to the public that, especially with the referendum coming up, that this money was allocated for that, for that project, it could not be used for anything else.
And we tell them in the contract not to exceed this.
Correct.
So, but they can go under it, that's, we can direct.
And the other thing, I talked to Superintendent Aldrich when I was visiting the schools on in-service date, and I went to the Lincoln. And I'm assuming that if this money needs to be used for bathroom projects, if we come in at all and there's any money left, and when you go in that Greenhaven, it's a brand new school in the school. And if there's anything, some of the teachers at the Lincoln said, you know, our, our school's looking kind of old. I mean, if there's anything we can do, that, the painting that they've done in there and just the Blue Jacket pride, if there's anything we can do if there's a few extra dollars left to now help them at the Lincoln, I think that would be something we could look at.
Absolutely. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, sign. Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Item B is a motion to approve the purchase of services, services agreement between ISD number 701 and Max Education Solutions, effective September 2nd, 2025 to June 2nd, 2026.
Any motion? Support?
Motion made by Christine, supported by Director Sarah, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, sign. Motion, Carrie, thank you.
Item C is a motion to approve the letter of cooperation between Hiving Public Schools and Rockers Public Schools to establish a collaborative agreement for the creation and operation of ALC effective with the 2026, 2027 school year. I'll move.
Support?
Board Director Poulter, support Board Director McGlaughlin, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same, sign. Motion, Carrie, thank you. So that was item A. Discussion items, item A, collaborate with Chisholm Schools, turn that over to Superintendent Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
I have Mr. Pleaser, Dave, that can give an update. He met recently with his counterpart in Chisholm and talked about some timelines, talked about some areas that we can cooperate. He has a little update there for you. But before we begin, I know Lisa Perkovich is here, just want to recognize her. New Chism superintendent, congratulations, Lisa. Only been on the job two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, congratulations. And I haven't had a chance to even reach out to her yet. And in all reality, I did not want to call her the first week of school and talk about, let her, let her get in and get settled. And, but I, you know, Lisa and, and for the board too, James is going to talk about sports. I would love to have a conversation about something deeper than this, about something that brings our two districts together in a, say the word, in consolidation. And not today, not, not, not maybe a five-year plan or a 10-year plan. And, and also in that process, I think there's a misconception that I want to say out loud in front of the board and everybody, if we were to have that conversation, the only way that it could work is if it's a win for Chism and a win for Hiving. It's not, it would not be everybody becomes a Blue Jacket or everybody becomes a Blue Street. We'd have to find a way to work together. You have to keep a school in your community, you have to keep, we would have to send you some students, you would have to send us some students. It would truly be a partnership, not a, not a, I'm a bigger district, you're a, it couldn't be that. That wouldn't be successful. And I think the other thing is, is if that word is out, some of this needs to come at a grassroots level too. I think our, our Hiving parents need to be saying to the board that this is something that they want us to pursue. And your parents would have to be on board and say, you should be pushing in the same direction. But I just want to say again, I mean, I think some of this has gotten misconstrued, and, and we've had, you've had changes over there at three superintendents since I've been here in this role, three different, it's just lots of change. But I'd like to work together for something that is, is mutually beneficial, because we all know we're heading in that direction where we have less revenue, less students. We're going to have to start working together. So with James, James is talking about sports today, but I'd love to have a bigger conversation that isn't on Hiving's terms, right? That's a shared agenda and, and shared mission. So I, I say that, I don't mean to offend anybody on the board, but I, I, that's the only way that this would move forward in a positive way. It can't be where one, one district determining how the other one would operate. We'd have to sit down and talk and have a conversation. I think, I think that could be done in lots of different ways, but I'd love to see it more of a grassroots work. The community's coming forward saying, you should be doing this. Because if, if they don't believe that, I don't, I wouldn't even want to sit down and have the conversation. So I'm sorry, a little bit of a sidebar there, but.
No, I, I agree 100%. And, you know, being that I'm basically, I think I told everybody on the board the story when I first moved up here and worked as a pipefitter, that the first thing they told me on the job site, you're not from here, so you're not a Ranger. I go, oh, okay. You're a 6-1 tour. I go, okay, you know? But to be real, you're realistic, realistic about the, where this school stands and where Chism stands, and I don't know their financials and all they have. In order for these two schools to survive, we need to look at this consolidation. And I think that's the only way that we're going to be able to come up with a program, as you said, that works for both the education side and the athletic side. And if we don't do that, my opinion, five years is too long. I think we should look at something shorter than that, because if we don't, one of us is not going to be here. And I just, I just firmly believe in that because of, you know, we've got to go out and we have to give more money. We have to ask the city, the people of Hiving to give us more money and keep the, keep the doors open. And it just, I go back to, if we can prove that we can be solvent, the state's going to step in and say, we're taking over. And I hate to see that ever happen to Hiving High School. But I'm hoping that the people in Chism, great people, been there plenty of times, can get on the same program. And their board can take a look at it and maybe come together with our board and just figure out what would be the best way to do it. There's going to be grumbling, we know that. But for the best interest of both the schools, I think it's something that has to be done.
And the other thing I think we need to say, just like Superintendent Aldrich said, nobody at this table has ever said to not have a school in Chism. I personally would always support a school in Chism. But the other thing is, there's a lot of misinformation floating around about pre-existing debt and liabilities. And we know that there's statute and process that surrounds that. And so we would never ask residents of Chism to take on our debt, as I don't expect Chism would take on, ask our residents to take on their debt. So Chism win, Hiving win, it's really the kids that win.
Absolutely, yeah.
And it's not 30 miles, it's only five miles. So, sorry, Mr. Pleaser.
Yeah, but Mr. Pleaser is going to give us an update on his conversation with Mr. Baki. And one thing I just want to add, just now, if you follow the paper at all, and, and some of the stories that recently happened, but the Chism City Council, Mr. Baki is on the council. If you noticed, then he, he's starting a conversation about soccer fields with the city. The process, right? I mean, to expect that we're just, you know, tomorrow, we can change programs and they're going to host. That's not realistic. If, if that's where we're going and he's, he's starting to have that conversation, look at his facilities, what they can use, what they can't use. And I think that's what James is going to highlight a little bit here, so go ahead, Mr. Pleaser.
Yeah, so Travis and I met, and I guess the first thing he wanted to start off with is, he asks for a little bit of more grace period, you know? We, we had a good conversation. I feel like it's heading in a really good direction. But at the same time, this is at least his second week on the job, they have a whole new admin team. At the time I met with Travis, he said he hadn't had a chance to sit with his new superintendent to even discuss some of this stuff. So we didn't want to get too far ahead of ourselves by thinking we were in bigger, more in charge than we really actually were. But with that being said, we did have a good discussion. He, he agrees, like, you know, in order for us to both survive, it's got to be a win-win. We talked about, you know, talking about our fall sports first, obviously, and looking at the swimming and cross-country programs. And if, you know, if swimming were to come to fruition, we would have an invite or two in the Chism pool and, you know, majority probably in our pool where we can have diving and stuff. It's a regulation size pool and stuff like that. He's aware of that. We talked about that soccer deal. And yeah, he, they're looking at making, if you're familiar with the baseball fields in Chism, the old pergol field is going to probably be revamped into a soccer facility. So they'll have a brand-new soccer facility. It won't be turf, so we'll still have to collaborate with our schedule there where, you know, because when you get to playoffs for high school soccer, you got to be on turf. So we can't just say, Chism's hosting soccer, see you later. That was never my intention either. Everyone in the soccer world that may be watching this or listening, that was never my intention. We still have to work on a schedule and collaborative efforts on that. But being that it's in Chism Soccer, that's something that we should probably be doing anyways. Obviously, down the line, he said, you know, he'd like to wait till after the fall season to really dig into these fall sports, because football is a concern over there right now. Their numbers are down. They're a proud community, they don't want to give up football. But at the same time, we have to be realistic with safety of players and kids and just the expectation of 25 guys making it through a football season healthy. And in 11-man football, doesn't make a ton of sense. So those are all things we touched on. Spring sports as well, baseball, softball probably come next in line. Track is so far down the road because they're really healthy, we're really healthy, they didn't really see a point. And then obviously, winter is a very fluid one too, because, you know, depending on numbers for the basketball programs. So we did talk about all of that stuff, and I felt like, again, we're in a good spot. He did ask, you know, he's, he hears some of the stuff and how we want to give a one-year notice, but he reminded, you know, these are two-year cycle, two-year agreements. We're in year one of our renewed two-year agreement. So maybe give them a little bit more time to get their feet, you know, under them and get everything set. And we'll have a little bit more substantial conversation. He would love to include coaches into this too. I know, I know we don't want too many people in the room, because then the opinions are just everywhere and we never get anywhere. But I do think, like, obviously, the cross-country coaches should probably sit down and talk about what this would look like, you know, and the swim coaches and stuff like that. So I, I think he's in a good spot, I'm in a good spot where we can facilitate that. And then obviously, it comes to you guys at the board level. So that's where we're at right now. The biggest, you know, obviously, Chism probably pushing forward ahead with their soccer complex is a big bonus for not just us, but just soccer in general, because there are 80 kids playing soccer 7 through 12, plus the youth numbers. And there were enough where there was a little contention, I guess, between the youth programs where they split into two different separate entities, and they had enough kids to support that. So there is a large community of soccer players out there. So I mean, for Chism to get some soccer fields, that would be probably a benefit for soccer as a whole. So that's really where we're at with that. So I know it's not, you know, it's not that concrete five-year plan, but I don't think that was realistic with the, all the change that Chism just went through.
So I appreciate all the hard work that got, that's gone into it this far. But I, I guess I am agreeing with Director Egan at this point is, right now, we don't have numbers in football in Chisholm. And maybe we're not going to have enough in soccer and maybe this. I think we need to be realistic. I don't see any huge influx in our population and our student numbers in the next few years. So I think that, well, I appreciate the two of you getting together. I think that we need a longer-range vision and commitment from each, from the two boards to move forward in something that's academics, athletics, activity, and then we'll figure it out together.
I, I just like, you know, when you mentioned that, and I'm not picking on Chisholm, believe me, I'm not. You know, why spend money building a new soccer field when you can come five miles and play on a turf soccer field that's two years old? I mean, there are just certain things there that, and again, the football program, they're playing 11-man this year. Whether or not they go back to 9-man or not, that, that's a different story. But I know they have kids, they don't have enough kids to play. And, and so does Hibbing, we don't have enough kids to play either. We're both trying to survive, the programs are trying to survive with the numbers that we have. And the only way, and I know that the, living on the range and what I've learned, living here for 34 years now, is that sports is a big thing. And it, it shows a lot of pride in your school and as citizens in the community. So here's an opportunity, and I've always made this comment, I shouldn't make it anymore, is that by the time we tear down that Berlin Wall between Chisholm and Hibbing, start working together to get things done, I think it would make it, not only for the community and for the school, a great deal for everybody, so I just want to throw that out.
Well, we'll keep working on it, keep updating the city.
Oh, and to be clear, this board is talking about it, I don't want any rumors spreading spread, that, you know, we are thinking about it. It will be addressed at a later meeting. And we are in our first year of a two-year commitment, so we do have to give them one year prior to the start of a fall or a winter sport. Is that correct?
So there will be some grease period.
Yep.
You know, are you done with your report?
We, we have one other thing that we wanted to, but you wanted to follow up on this?
No, no, go ahead.
Was this with the Chisholm stuff, because that, my, my next step is probably, it is more of a, maybe I couldn't follow Kerry either, but I'll do my best to try, you know, since I got pushed up here.
Mr. Do you mind if I tee this up a little bit?
You go right there.
Okay, so we, we wanted to, to talk with the board and I want James to be able to share with you. And we had some concerns recently about behavior and some locker rooms, some away trips, buses. We have, police investigated that information, we, we did an independent investigation this summer. Although those allegations weren't substantiated, I think we realized that there, there are things that are happening behind some closed doors and locker rooms and buses that we need more supervision. We need, we need to take that seriously, we need to not tiptoe around it. I just come right out, call it what it is and address it. So what I'd asked James to do, after we'd gotten our, even before we'd gotten our final report from our independent investigation, is I asked him to, to meet with coaches, talk about their plans, what, are we talking seating charts on buses? What does it look like for supervision on buses, how do we manage locker rooms, who's responsible? And I think he's put together a real nice process to make that happen. And that's what I wanted him to share tonight, is that I want our community to know that we, that we take it seriously, we care, that we, we are doing something. Some of these things, right, are, are sometimes out of our control, so we need help, we need the help of the students, we need the help of our parents, right? For everybody to be on the same page that when we have a behavior that we want to address, that we get supported by the parent also, right? When we, because sometimes we get pushback that, I mean, we know you can't analyze my student or no, it wasn't. Again, we're, we're working for the detriment of all of our kids, but I think James, James has put together a good plan here, rolling forward, that we can feel that our coaches are taking that seriously and that we have a supervision place. So do you want to talk a little bit about that, what that would look like, James?
Yeah, that's fine. And it's one of those, like, I see there, you know, obviously, I'm not blind to social media, I'm on there, but not, not too, too often, because it takes a lot for me not to maybe respond to some of this stuff, especially when it addresses me personally. But there are certain things I can't necessarily share with the public as a whole. None of those allegations were taken lightly, even they came in after the fact. So what I've done is, one, with each season that comes in, we sit down with the head coaches and I address, you know, here's some, there's some spots that we really need to improve on. So we sat down and we did come up with some, maybe reinforcement. I don't want to say the coaches weren't doing their jobs before with supervision, because as a, as a coach currently and former three-sport coach, I know sometimes you're dealing with teenagers that are going to misbehave no matter the best plan you have moving on, you know, forward. So, but we put some, you know, reminders in place or some safeguards in place there. You know, you're, you're not to leave your locker room completely unsupervised, even if you think it's a varsity team and you can trust your upperclassmen. So we do have coaches that do drift through there. They're not in there on their iPads or their phones, I know we talked about, can't we have them in there doing stats? Well, we don't do paper stats hardly anymore, everyone's on something digital now. And if you have an iPad out in the locker room, we've been down that road before, so. But they are making their way through and being visible in that on the bus trips. Anytime there is the availability of multiple coaches on the bus, they are to spread out as much as possible. You know, in the past, it's been up front, all right? So we're trying to keep our kids safe, we're trying to keep our eyes on the kids. I still have a little bit of leeryness as the idea of putting a coach by themselves in the very back of the bus and one in the front of the bus. I just, I don't think that's the best method either. But they're tracking and scanning, if you get up and walk up and down the aisle, if it's a long trip, that should be enough of a presence felt that you are avoiding any of these behaviors, all right? So it's stuff like that. And some of it is the timeliness of getting these reports to us, because the buses, I think almost all of our buses now have camera systems on it, so we can review film. It's just, it's an unfortunate part of this major one that was out there, that it came in months after it happened. And we didn't have the film, they, they just didn't track that far back. So we are addressing things like that, like I said, in individual meetings with the head coaches and as a group, so they can lean on each other. We had a fall head coaches meeting, we'll have a winter head coaches meeting, and we'll discuss this stuff there. So that's the kind of stuff. A blanket policy where I have to dictate or demand, you know, coach in the front, coach in the middle, coach in the back, it won't work. Because we just, we don't have the staff, you know, like, there are certain sports that staffs, that's, that's not realistic. But when, when, when possible, we are spreading that. And we are doing a little bit of a upper-class leadership training. I know some programs are ahead of the others with that, because it's probably impacted them a little more seriously, so. But we are doing some leadership training with that, so we're trying.
Can I just add too, I think, you know, a concern for our coaches, and it's justifiable, is that locker room supervision, that they are going to be accused of looking at somebody or, you know, kids spinning that around. And I've shared with James and he's shared with the coaches, and I just, I hope, hope you feel the same way. And I just want to make sure that you support them and tell them that that's not a concern, right? We've got their back, right? We do background checks on people, right? These are employees, right? If, if there's an issue that comes up, I will deal with it, right? If there's an accusation. But again, I want our, I want our coaches to feel supported when they're in those locker rooms and not, and to know also that the board has their back, right? If they, if they do get accused of something, because that might happen, right? A kid says, oh, you know, looking at me or, but, but we can't, we can't have it both ways. We can't, either we, if we're putting people in there, we have to be able to trust them and give them the power to supervise. So just want to say that, because that's, that's a concern for our coaches, I get it, it's, it's a, it's a real thing.
I appreciate it, you know, James, all the work that went into it to our administrative team, because this is different than, I mean, in different administrations and different eras of, of this school district. We're talking about what we can, what we can do to improve school safety. And that means in, in this building and in other areas where we have activities and athletics going on. So I appreciate it and, you know what, and I agree, like, we need the support of our community and our parents. And again, what we can do to educate students in and out of the classroom. Because we want upstanding young citizens in this building and it's a part of it. And so I appreciate, it's an uncomfortable space, but we need to do this. And it's different, and it's different, and it's a different culture of Hibbing High School, and I appreciate that. Or the Hibbing schools.
I hope too, in the conversations, that coaches go to their athletes too and just have that discussion of, of, of course, we want them to behave and be responsible. But also to know that it is a safe space to, you see something, you say something, bring it to our attention. You know, if it comes forward, that, those coaches, that adult does look into it, that it doesn't get ignored, it doesn't wait months down the line. That we do take those issues seriously immediately also, you know. So to still be protecting and believing students if there were ever anything brought up. But again, yeah, you, you hope that they are mature enough to not partake in behavior like that.
I have one last question, Mr. Please, what's the GPA for a student to participate in sport?
1.5.
1.5?
Yep.
I, I know numbers are down and all that.
That, that predates that.
I think that's something we need to take care of.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, and James, James and I have had those conversations. Again, I think his first year kind of getting his feet wet, I think now he digs a little bit more on some, yeah, almost first year, almost first year. Now that, and that might too, that's set, because that's the high school league minimum. And the mindset behind some of that is, is that we have special education students that participate in activities and they struggle sometimes with grades. So I think, but I think we could, right, we could have different criteria. We could, we could have criteria for regular Ed students, we could have some criteria for, oh, maybe not, discriminatory. But I, but what I'm saying is, I think we could work through those issues. And that, the, the bottom line is, is that we, again, we want kids participating. We need those numbers out, but I agree, 1.5 is very low.
If we have an athlete that does have a problem or doesn't need help, we have tools to help them. And to me, if you want, if you want to represent your school, you better have a pretty good classroom presentation. I mean, you got to be at 1.5, you might let him show up for school. I mean, it's not, that's not good.
But again, what percentage of our student body is not in our classrooms?
Well, that's the other problem, which we talked about earlier.
Yeah, I think the high school indicators are even like lower, at least the progress towards graduate, or adequate progress towards graduation. And we define that, like, what's adequate progress to graduation, that's district by district.
If we can't keep dummies down, our good students to take care of the ones, you need to find that balance.
Policies from the Megan, Megan Potter era, I think this is.
I think Megan, it was maybe when I first came here about seven years ago, I think Megan had meetings with coaches. I think they brought proposals forward, I think they approved that lower GPA, like right about that time, like 2019, 2020.
This conversation's come up every few years, you know, as I've been on here.
From 125 to 150 to 240.
The argument about 1.5 had to do with, you know, we don't want to weigh out a student's life. And take the one pos, possibly the one, one, only positive thing in their life away from them when they're struggling with emotional problems, family issues, et cetera, doesn't benefit anybody.
And it does, I agree, my, it sounds low, but then I did talk to a few teachers last year and they, they would argue to keep it at 1.5 because of what Director Polster bringing out, that sometimes.
When Megan and the Polster, we have the tools in this school that a student needs help, very able to help them. And why not bring them back up to a 2.0 or whatever you want to come up to?
Minnesota State High School, it also comes into play on that. We better move along here.
When they get to 2.0, should there be some remediation? Because my concern is this, if we have students in college courses and it ends up below 2.0, if they choose to go on to college or technical college or whatever, they would be going in potentially in financial aid, suspension or probation. So we're setting them up for failure. We're not doing our part to help make them successful in the future.
Except they have two great ones, one we take here and one we take there.
I know you want to move on, I just have one comment, nothing to do with what we talked about, but I'm so excited. Thank you for going online, we are now GoFan, you can buy all your tickets for our sports activities online. And I've been pushing for this, I'm excited, I've used it, I love it, and I hope everybody else does.
I was going to say, to end on some more positive things, yeah, transportation with Dustin's been going great. It's been a learning curve, but been going great, because Dustin and I are becoming BFFs. GoFan is up and running, digital ticketing, we soft-rolled it out for girls' soccer, we had it out running for volleyball. We'll probably have it up for Friday's home football opener. Fall Sports is going, home football opener this week, so get there Friday. Personal, cross-country, first time both teams have been ranked together in probably 30 years. It's the first time for the boys to be in the coaches rankings in over 25 years. And then we are live streaming on Huddle for free, all of our football, soccer and volleyball games. So if you can't make it to the game or if it's too cold for you, should be on Huddle for free right now still. And you can watch it from the comfort of your own home, live stream on Huddle TV on our Hibbing channel. So there are some good things happening.
And I want to thank congratulations to you and your staff. I attended my first cross-country event yesterday. You know what's nice about cross-country? You start here and you walk 10 feet and then end here. I don't have to run around the golf course. But I want to congratulate you on the success of your program so far and a continued success.
Okay, good conversation, and you followed Kerry very well, so thank you. But then we move on to the next item, Superintendent Ruff.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair, just, just a very brief referendum update, some of the things we're working on. Early voting again begins on the 19th. Alex has, all ready to go, we'll be voting here, there's hours posted on our site. We just did, I did, I met with Rotary this morning, did a presentation on our referendum. I plan to do an H-Pat visit with Mr. Egan and Gary for their show. What other items do we have coming out that I should be, Kerry, anything I'm missing on the referendum? We've got a vote, a vote, yes, committee meeting is happening tomorrow, I think, at the college.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock.
KDK meeting next week.
KDK, we're meeting yet with some, with those folks. But things are, things are progressing well, good conversations again. Rotary, the Rotary meeting this morning was very supportive, nice, nice conversations there with that group too, so. Anything you want to say about voting, anything else?
I'll just say that, like you said, it starts on the, early voting starts on the 19th. It'll be down in the high school office, so people don't have to walk through the building. And the hours are 8:00 to 3:30.
And the other voting place is the hearing, correct?
On election day will be the one.
On election day, yes, yes.
One more thing, we missed an important topic today, enrollment. I think our enrollment numbers, if I calculated it right, were up from where we ended last year? If, if you look at like, high school K-12?
Yeah, by, by a few, and again, it's, it's, it's early. The 15-day drop, that's a.
It's concrete yet, so we've got to wait until next thing we can to get that.
The 15-day drop rule, and how that works in public schools is we, a student that attended with us last year, if we haven't received a record request from another district, we're keeping that student, you know, thinking that they're attending with us or waiting for them to come. And we keep, we watch them for 15 days. That's also a turntable piece, the requirement that we have to do, and then we'll make a report if those students have showed up with us, they need to be someplace. So that hasn't all shook out yet and it's, it's, you know, there, there could potentially be enrollments sitting on the secretary's desk that haven't been put into Power School yet. And there could be enrollments within Power School, we think the, the student is coming, but may not come. So it hasn't really shaken out yet, but yes, first look, it looks like pretty steady, you know, we speak about where we work. And I talked with, or sent a message to the board about our enrollment report. And I know that's, that's a format that the board liked to see years past, but I think it's a little misleading, a little confusing. a little misleading, a little confusing. Trina and I are going to look at some different options to, to put that together, we had another version, I don't know if you remember, it was more of a, a grid, that even might, might be a little more useful, I think, to show, but, either way, if, if you're happy with the way it looks, I won't touch it, but we were, we're going to try to clean it up and make it a little bit more useful to read, and yes, time, I need to stop talking.
When are you going out in the future?
When am I go, I'll go on, if you don't want me to attend board meetings, Mr. Chair, this will be my last one, I'll, like, sit in the crowd if you'd like.
I didn't see what you were suggesting, that's your imagination? I don't know, or a juror, or a court, or no?
Boy, a court juror.
I saw objection, that maybe this juror is three minutes after five, and I want to thank you, well, for being patient, for your attendance.
Listening to Superintendent.
Hibbing Public Access TV may be viewed on these platforms. HPAT.org with video on demand. MediaCom Hibbing, eight oh two, eight oh five, and eight oh seven. On Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Download the Hibbing Public Access TV app for your iPhone and Android devices. Find us on Facebook, YouTube, and Vimeo. For more information, scan the QR code, go to HPAT.org. Hibbing Public Access Television would like to thank MediaCom for all the years they have supported our organization. Visit their office at thirty-one oh five East Beltline, Suite Number Two, here in Hibbing. And give them a call at eight-five-five-six-three-three-four-two-two-six. For over twenty-five years, U.S. Bank, located at two-eleven East Howard Street in Hibbing, Minnesota, has provided office and studio space for Hibbing Public Access Television. We are thankful for their ongoing support.